As the Mayor Pro Tem of the Town of Clayton, I call this regular meeting of the Clayton Town Council to order and ask that you stand as we pledge allegiance to the flag and remain standing for our prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for allowing us to gather tonight. We ask that you watch over us as we conduct the business of the Town of Clayton. For us in your name, we pray, amen. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, I would like to ask, under consent agenda, that we add two sets of draft minutes that were forwarded to the council on Saturday, and those draft minutes are for November 1st regular session, as well as the November 10th special session. And the other adjustment I would like to make is just to call to your attention, item 8B, acceptance of real property donation. On the agenda, it's listed as Resolution 2021-61. That should be 2021-62.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, that is noted. Any other adjustments? Moving along, the consent agenda.
Move, move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Black sign. And the motion carries. Next up, we have introductions and special presentations. We have the Carolinas Association of Chamber Executive of the Year Award, and the presenter is Patrick Pierce.
Good evening, council. Mayor Pro Tem, Patrick Pierce, Economic Development Director. I know we've got a very busy agenda, but when great things are happening, you've got great people amongst you, I think it's important we take at least a minute to celebrate those successes here. And recently, in the past few weeks, the Carolinas Association of Chamber Executives awarded our own Clayton Chamber of Commerce executive, Dana Wooton, as their Executive of the Year. And I think that's something really awesome, that our chamber here in Clayton, and our great partner, the Clayton Chamber, was awarded that. And Dana, I think, does such a fantastic job in her partnership with the team. And I was on full display with Harvest Fest just a few weeks ago, and just want to make sure we had an opportunity here in a public setting to recognize her for that. So Dana, please stand and be recognized, and if we can all give a round of applause, that'd be fantastic.
Mayor Pro Tem, council and staff, I want to thank you so much for this recognition. It truly speaks to the partnership and collaboration that we have between the chamber and the town that I'm even standing here and you are recognizing. This humbly honor that I received from the CACC E. I have a fabulous board of directors who give me direction, but let me take my ideas and run with them. I have an amazing staff that with this, without them, it wouldn't be possible. So I really appreciate all of you and our partnership and the trust that we have amongst each other. So thank you so much.
Dana, we certainly thank you. An alive and thriving Chamber of Commerce always is indicative of an alive and thriving town. And I think they go hand in hand, and what you do, and your staff, and your board contributes in an immeasurable way to the Town of Clayton. We can, we can see it, but we can't touch it at so big. And thank you very much. Mr. Granis.
I just want to thank you for what you do, but equally important is that your board and your staff are a direct reflection of who you are and you of them. And to do the job that the entire group has done to get us to where we are today is truly a great accomplishment, and I thank each and every one of you. And I'm glad we've got you.
Okay, moving along, we have, we're going to move into public hearings. First up, item 6A is 2020-104-SD, the Lumen subdivision. This is a quasi-judicial issue, so I'll turn it over to our attorney for some guidance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Just a reminder, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, which means court-like rules apply. You're sitting as finders of fact. Unlike a discretionary zoning matter, if the conditions are satisfied, the plan should be approved. There's an opportunity for examination of witnesses, asking questions, and witnesses should be sworn.
Anybody wishing to offer testimony, if you could please stand and raise your right Do you solemnly affirm the testimony you're about to give is true to the best of your knowledge and belief? If you open your testimony, you'll see a sign-in sheet. If you could just print your name on that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, one, one final reminder. This is a continuation of a public hearing that was already opened. It's not necessary to repeat information that's already been provided. So this, this could be limited to new information.
Thank you so much. Mr. Howell.
Good evening. Just have a couple of short slides to go through with you, primarily focusing on the changes. I did want to start with this one, just again, the considerations that you saw last meeting, or a couple of weeks, a couple of meetings ago for approving this preliminary plat, acting as a master plan. Briefly going through the master plan revision since October meeting, we've revised the recommended conditions of approval, which I'll go through here shortly. The master plan narrative has had revisions to match the proposed revisions to the master plan. The maximum building height for the office, medical, and mixed-use buildings has been clarified. No, no change, the maximum height was just clarified, that at the 145-foot maximum height applies to this building or these buildings. And the master plan narrative now also notes potential for up to one acre of land dedication in the master plan development area for the elevated water storage tank. The master plan itself had several revisions, including providing alternative street sections for Streets A and B showing on-street parking, removing the extension of the public Street D to the south. This was due to the proposed location of the elevated water storage tank, and instead would replace it with a private, private access easement for some potential single-family residences that would be located outside of the master plan development area. Also have identified the location of the pump station outside of the master plan development area on the master plan. And there's also language to provide flexibility to the developer to move Street D to the eastern property boundary if land to the east is purchased and developed by the developer. Again, this is the master plan. No real change from what you saw a few weeks ago in October, other than you'll see now the streets do show the potential on-street parking for Streets A and B. These are the alternative cross-sections that have been provided for Streets A and B showing on-street parking. The alternative Section A on top, it shows angled parking on both sides, in working between the staff and the applicant. They've been directed that if, if, if parallel, if angled parking is provided on both sides of the street, staff would like to see a median in order to, to make that a more safe movement for the parking. So that is provided in Cross Section A. And in Cross Section B, you'll see they've provided an alternative cross-section to allow angled parking on one side and parallel parking on the other that would not require a median. Finally, the conditions of approval that are slightly revised from what you saw back in October. I won't read through all of them here, but these first eight are, for the most part, the same as what you saw previously. These next four, or next three, again, are very similar to what you saw. I think there's been some minor tweaks to recommended Condition 9. And then on this next slide, there's some additional tweaks to the conditions, specifically, I believe, Condition 14 and 15 have been tweaked slightly, and then Condition 17, well, Condition 16's also been tweaked slightly, and then Condition 17 is new. And that's the completion of the staff report. The applicant is here and does have some additional testimony to provide.
Thanks, sir. Next up, we hear from the applicant.
Members of council, thank you for having us back tonight. As, as it was stated before, excuse me, there's a, this is a continuation of, of the discussion and presentation and testimony that we've given recently. And came back and worked with staff, as you may recall, on the, some details associated with the elevated storage tank location in that public utility. I did want to elaborate, first of all, my name's Richard Brown with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Davis Park Leasing LLC. With me tonight is Craig Davis from Davis Park Leasing, as well as Dean Penny and Travis Fluid, our traffic engineer for the project, back with us tonight to elaborate on any testimony that's necessary. I did want to just quickly, without drawing out this portion of the hearing, elaborate a little on the changes that Ben had highlighted in the master plan. As we went back through and worked with staff on these alternate locations and had to move some circulation around, it did become necessary to make some clarifications and still maintain consistency with our, the findings of the subdivision through connectivity and just adjustments that needed to be made. At the same time, we do have an application going in the door with the town for the construction documents that have some information that we wanted to make sure was consistent with this master plan that was being decided on tonight, too. And those are the on-street parking additions or adjustments that, that Ben had alluded to. So up on the screen, I'll just flip to MP 03. All of this is in your packet. We have highlighted some things through revision clouds just for your benefit and clarity. Hopefully, that's well-legible to you. Zooming in, just on screen to take note of a couple of those things, specifically along what we're calling Streets A and Street B. Street A, the pointer here, and to the pod one side of the frontage, Street B. We are, we have proposed on-street angled parking there, or the flexibility to provide on-street angled parking based on how these pods develop. And so we wanted to make sure, again, that the master plan accurately reflected that, so we, we weren't getting into some interpretation issues in the administrative process. So as you see, we've, we've worked through that with staff. Street C, Main Street, has always had on-street angled parking on it. That is a private Main Street that will be maintained and controlled by the Property Owners Association. But where there is public right-of-way on Streets A and B, we needed to work through some technicalities to maintain circulation and safety where we were going to be introducing on-street parking. So this is a conceptual layout of that, and as Ben noted, just in plan view, where we, inconsistent with, with the master plan and the street sections that we've provided as additional evidentiary information, where we have back-to-back on-street angled parking, or angled parking on both sides of the street, we're introducing a minimum four-foot-wide median there, so that people backing out and, and sort of interfacing with the traffic coming in and out of these turning movements can maintain a safe condition. So this master plan sheet or, or layout reflects where those medians would occur. Where there are adjustments at the construction document level, we will maintain a condition that's consistent with, with this master plan ruling. So as Ben showed these earlier, I just wanted to sort of give you these sort of in the same context. We have, and again, in your packet, added two alternative cross, street cross-sections that give the technical bounds for where this, where this will occur, this cross-section will apply. So where we, again, may have parallel parking on one side of the street and angled on the other, like you have out in front of Town Hall, a median will not be required, or in locations where there is not on-street parking. The top cross-section reflects really the condition that, that is the, that is the main new street section, and that is where we do have angled parking on both sides. There's a median, and that'll all be, including sidewalks, adjusted to be within the public Highlighting a couple of more adjustments that Ben walked us through, here clouded in the lower right-hand side of the, of the development, is where we've moved the public extension of Street D that was being proposed previously due to, due to the study of a location, a higher location for the elevated storage tank, which was a topic of the continuation of this case at the last meeting. We've just clarified and still providing connectivity to the south, even though that, that will not be a significant density and is not included within, within this development. We're not precluding a access via private street to that property. And then just providing some clarifications throughout the document where we've added notation where the Street D, Ben alluded to it earlier, can, can have some flexibility for adjustment to its final location. Everything else is fairly minor in terms of any clarifications that have been added in response to these changes. Those have been reflected throughout the documents. But of course, we're here and happy to answer any question, specific questions that you may have there. Again, Travis Fluid, our traffic engineer, is here along with me and can answer any questions related to traffic or circulation through the development. And we're, with that, we're happy to take any questions that you have. Thank you.
Mr. Granis.
I actually have a question regarding the, the parking issue, and it could be directed to both staff and Lumen representative. I'd like to hear, if I may, from, from our fire chief and get his experience of this new parking layout as to whether or not it's satisfactory or not.
Needs to be administered, yes. Madam Clerk.
You could just stand, Lee, and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly affirm the testimony you're about to give is true to the best of your knowledge and belief? Thank you.
Chief, are you, are you familiar with the, with the parking layouts that were just shown?
I've not looked at the parking layout. The fire marshal and fire inspector have been working with planning, only to my knowledge. Ben may have more information to the layout.
Thank you.
Can you, sorry, can you repeat your question one more time?
Yes, I'm curious to know if our fire marshal is familiar with these, these new layouts, and if so, if they're satisfied with them, and if not, why?
So these layouts came about from review of a, some preliminary review of an infrastructure subdivision for this area, and, and the on-street parking was shown as part of that review. So staff did provide comments, and that is what generated the revision to the master plan at this point. So the fire marshal has seen these. I cannot recall if he provided specific comments, but engineering and planning staff did meet with the applicants and discuss the specific on-street parking to ensure that if it was going to be allowed, that it would be allowed and constructed in a manner that would provide for safe passage of emergency vehicles, as well as provide as much safety as possible for pedestrians and the traffic traveling those roadways.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem, I do have several other questions that pertain to a number of different topics, and I'm prepared to ask those when it's appropriate.
Yes, sir. As long as we're covering new material and not things that have already been hashed out.
I believe it's, I believe it's new material.
Proceed.
First question I have is, this is for both staff and applicant, and it refers to the findings of fact, number two. The subdivision meets all required specifications of the Unified Development Code. The answer was, the plan proposal is consistent with the adopted plans of the Town of Clayton. The applicant will ensure that the master plan will continue to meet all required specifications of the policies and Unified Development Code, except where otherwise addressed through alternate design standards as spelled out within. I'm curious to know what is meant by that statement. It sounds to me like there's an implication that exceptions may be made, and if that's the case, I'd like to know why.
So with this being a planned development, part of the purpose of being able to do a planned development such as this is to essentially write your own code for, for, for things that may not fit in under the existing UDC. So that statement is often used in planned developments and also with conditional zonings, which is what you'll see moving forward, to, to show that it will comply with the UDC with the exception of areas where specifically in the master plan narrative or in the master plan document, exceptions are called out. So for example, with Lumen, they have different setbacks than are, would be required in the traditional UDC development. They have, I believe, the height is, the 145-foot height is taller than we would normally allow. But again, that's why it is coming to you as a planned development, is it allow this option, it allows them to propose some different standards. But again, the council has, has to approve the use of those different standards through approval of the plan development.
But I would assume then the planning staff or yourself would have the final say on, on whether or not those would either come before the council or not. Is that fair to say?
Yes, yes. So staff has spent quite a bit of time over the last couple of years reviewing this master plan and, and working through both the UDC issues and seeing where it differs and ensuring that all staff, you know, regarding, that are involved in development review and emergency staff would be, emergency services staff would be comfortable with the different standards that are proposed.
Okay. Next one applies to quasi-finding of fact, number three. The subdivision will not be detrimental to the use or orderly development of other properties in the surrounding area and will not violate the character of existing standards for development of properties in the surrounding areas. The last sentence says, "The size of assemblage and proposed infrastructure will also support the proposed mixed uses with retail, office, institutional, public, civic, townhouses, and even congregate, or congregated care being proposed. Appropriate buffers are also proposed to protect the adjacent land use." The question that I have is, how do we know that the infrastructure is indeed adequate?
And with that, I will defer to the applicant and their experts that they have here tonight.
All right.
Thank you for the question, Councilor Granis. So the, the development, as we designed it, as you can see, allows for connectivity. Throughout the development allows for connectivity to all adjoining properties that will allow for the future development and for the proposed program that we are submitting within this proposal. We feel like, in, in looking at, I won't speak from a traffic standpoint, Travis Fluid is here and can add to, add to it in that regard, but our connectivity to throughout the development-
here and can add to it in that regard, but our connectivity too throughout the development, the framework that we're providing here, and the redundancy of the, both the circulation network, vehicular and pedestrian, the access that it provides through public and private streets to all pods from multiple locations sufficiently provide adequate access. And then, the utility plan, of course, shows, reflects the wastewater and water services that would be provided at construction plan in an engineering forum, but shows conceptually how that would all support this development. Stormwater is another item, a key item for development like this, and it's being handled through shared stormwater throughout the development and where that would not be sufficient to handle all, any new impervious area that would be supplemented on, within the pod development itself. So, hopefully, that answers your question for the most part, but happy to elaborate where you need.
I think that clarifies the concern I had. With respect to quasi-question number four under findings of fact, "The subdivision design will provide for the distribution of traffic in a manner that will avoid mitigate or mitigate congestion within the immediate area, will provide for the unified and orderly use of our extension of public infrastructure, and will not materially endanger the environment, public health, safety, or general welfare." The first sentence says, "Adequate public facilities, including existing and proposed streets, existing and proposed wastewater treatment, existing and proposed potable water, and existing and proposed stormwater infrastructure are either existing or will be improved to meet the demands of the proposed uses to the maximum extent practical." Could you elaborate on that statement as far as practicable? That sounds to me like one of my interpretations could be that maybe you cannot comply.
Yeah, there is, that is the statement that we have provided, but we, as we've developed the master plan following the submittal of the major subdivision application, we've worked through all of this with TRC, as Ben alluded to, over time, and are now bearing some of those out factually through the subdivision and the construction documents. And if you, if there's a specific area of question, we can address those specifically, but I don't, we don't, in the best of our judgment, we don't see any issue meeting all of these requirements under this finding.
Well, I would assume that anything that would come up would either be handled by staff or engineering team or both. So, I'm satisfied with that as well. In 6.1 of your presentation, residential uses, you indicate that you have single-family, front alley and rear-loaded. Could you share with us what the lot size and square footage of those homes would be?
We really don't have anything specific on the residential pods in terms of a statement that we could make in conjunction with this application in this hearing at this time, because those residential designs just simply haven't been, haven't been started. We do, we do want the, to allow for and have proposed for the flexibility of essentially a very dense, single-family, zero-lot line type of a development. Those could just as easily be townhomes as you see throughout developments in town and in the region. We simply really don't have any hard market data beyond that at this point.
Can you tell us approximately how many single-family homes you're intending on having?
Up to 120 are proposed within this development. Those would exist primarily within Pod 5, and to the extent we can provide adequate infrastructure to Pod 6, those, the balance would be there.
Okay. Also, in 6.2, one of the items that fall into that category would be a church or a place of worship. Do you have any intentions of possibly having one of those two? And if so, would that be a standalone, or where would it be located?
We have provided or proposed that within our allowable land uses, but there's no specific plans for a place of worship in our program at this time, similar to some other civic uses that we wanted to allow for, depending on how the market bore out in our conversations with both municipal and developers would allow for those opportunities within the development. But I can't say that we have a place designated for that within the plan.
Okay. I'm sure whatever you would do would comply with whatever
Yes, sir.
town ordinances that we have. In 7.2, non-residential land uses, we're talking about essentially office space, and I cannot recall specifically where, but in your document, you use the term Class A office space. But I only see that term noted one time, and in subsequent times where office space is being referred to, it's only the term office space. So, I have a couple of questions here. Could you define what Class A office space is, first of all?
So, without being a office market expert, we would intend to market this, and really Pod 1, to your first allusion, is where we would primarily concentrate the office space itself. We intend, to the extent we can predict and really predict any future, that that will essentially be an office medical hub. So, I think the market itself will dictate what that, what the nature of that space is. Craig Davis, who is here and has a lot more market experience to speak to the definition of Class A office space, can add to that or elaborate on that. But the intent within this plan is to have really the office concentrated in that Pod 1 and really organized as a office and combination of office and medical campus in and of itself.
So, would it be fair to say that the 700,000 square feet maximum that you're referencing would all be Class A office space?
That would be our intent, yes, sir.
Okay. And you did say a maximum of 700, but you never said what a minimum would be. Are you prepared to share what a minimum amount of space would be?
We're not prepared to commit to a minimum with the plan for the purpose of the master plan and the TIA and all the factors that have gone into providing the framework of this plan. We've only provided maxims on the land uses. And to your, it's a good, it's a good point and observation on your read of the document that really we should be consistent with the term Class A office space throughout the document. That's an oversight.
So, I'll just share this. Because there's no minimum, I have a bit of a concern about that, because worst-case would be nothing, which I'm sure would not be the case, but maybe it could only be 200,000 square feet, and I have a concern about that. I would be inclined, if the council so deems, to possibly consider a minimum or have staff possibly consider a minimum. That's just a little food for thought. to believe would be 11-foot lane only, and I'm going to say 22-foot back-to-back. Is that correct?
That is correct, I believe.
And is that going to, are those streets going to be streets that will have no parking?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Both sides? Both sides of the street would be no parking?
Parking proposed on either side, right.
About the residential areas.
And those, the street, correct me if I'm not answering your question correctly, but Section A is intended to be really within our dedicated neighborhood streets or residential pods, I should say, 5 and 6 specifically, where they would likely be your more traditional single-family and/or attached single-family residential use. This is a slight modification from the town's prescribed street cross-section within the ordinance, just in terms of its median planting strip on each side and the sidewalk section, but very close to and within the 50-foot right-of-way that's within the ordinance. And there would not be any proposed alternative for on-street parking on those streets.
The reason I raise that question is that we've had some developments come to us with the same parameters with respect to 22 back-to-back, and I think I'm saying that right. And what we find is, is that we have parking on both sides of the street, and if that happens to be the case, typically, that's not going to allow for emergency vehicles to get through. And that's why I raised that question. Would you be adverse to having no parking on one side of the street throughout the residential areas?
I may have to rely on some input from staff to correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I believe that to be an enforcement issue. We would, by design and by the, by complying with the subdivision for a neighborhood street, there would, that would be precluded just by the ordinance, and we're not proposing to modify that aspect.
Would you be willing to if asked, or if that became a condition?
I'm not clear on what we would be requesting, but
That there would be no parking on one side of the street?
I don't think this applicant would be opposed to that, but I don't believe that it's necessary to modify the street section based on the subdivision limiting or precluding on-street parking there. I just believe it's an enforcement issue that I agree with you. I see in different places and different municipalities, but it's illegal essentially already, in my view.
Mr. Granis?
Yes?
Mr. Mayor, point of clarification. It looks like on that diagram there that it says 27 back-to-back. Is that
I'm sorry. That includes the curb and the, that is consistent
Back and, yeah.
That is consistent with our typical street section.
Right.
27-foot back-to-back would be two 11-foot lanes.
Right.
30-inch curb and gutter on both sides.
Right.
So, that gets you the 27-foot back-to-back.
And I know that we have developments in town that are that way, and there is parking on both sides of the street, and I don't believe we could get an emergency vehicle through if that were the case, where two vehicles would park pretty much across from each other. That's why, that's why I bring that up. It's a safety issue, and I'll defer to Mayor Protem Thompson.
My, what, I think what I'm hearing, we don't need to hold him to what anybody else is doing in town. We've got an agreement submitted by them. If people are parking on both sides of the street elsewhere in town, that's on us, and we have the right at any time to affect ordinance to limit that or change it. And I don't think that we have any business trying to hold them to any standard of anybody else in town.
I, well, I can't disagree with that as long as, as long as we have the right to enforce an or, or implement an ordinance that could eliminate parking on one side. And I know we've, I don't know that we have an ordinance, but I know that we have required that from a couple of past developments. You could have adopted one. There'll be publicly dedicated streets. Okay.
I would think that issue would have been well-vetted during the technical review committee aspect. So, I feel like fire chief, police chief, probably, if they had had an issue with this, I feel like it would have shown up prior to.
Next question I have is under 15.4. "The capacity of adequate public facilities and services, including schools, roads, recreation facilities, wastewater treatment, potable water supply, and stormwater drainage facilities is available for the proposed use." The response was, "Adequate public facilities, including existing and proposed roads, existing and proposed wastewater treatment, existing and proposed potable water, and existing and proposed stormwater infrastructure are either existing or will be improved to meet the demands of the proposed use." What I did not see or hear is anything about schools. I'm going to make an assumption that there is no property dedicated for the possibility of school use. Would that be fair to say?
That is correct.
And could you tell me if the Johnson County School Board might be aware that this development is coming?
I can't speak to the awareness of the school board. We have not been engaged through this process, understanding that's a needs assessment through the county. We have not had interface with them during this process.
Okay. So, I saw the parking report, which I thought was pretty thorough, but I'm curious to know why we're reducing 526 spaces.
Okay. And I don't have the printout of, I believe, the evidentiary information that you have there, but our, our expert, parking expert with Kenley Horn has provided what I believe is in your packet, the signed and sealed parking report. What we are really contemplating there is just the flexibility for parking reduction as the market dictates. Within the nature of this development is intended to be a high mix of uses, shared parking at different times throughout the day and peak hours. And not speaking as a parking expert, and perhaps we can elaborate on that as needed, but the purpose of it is really to provide the flexibility to not have a sea of additional parking out where, you know, within a mixed-use development like this, where it's proposed. So, we're proposing some adjustments to the parking code that are consistent with mixed-use developments within this region and within the Triangle jurisdiction, generally speaking. Just really don't have any specific program for that, just looking for the flexibility based on the mix of uses that we're proposing, the densities that we're proposing, and what we contemplate to be the peak hour for those, for those uses.
Okay. I do have a couple of traffic study questions.
Travis Fluid is here to address those. Good evening, Travis Fluid and Kenley Horn and Associates.
Good evening, Travis Fluid and Kimley Horn and Associates.
In the Kimley Horn, uh, traffic study for traffic impact analysis, under 4.0, we're looking at several project, uh, projected trip generations, 35% to and from north on US 70, 25% to and from east on 42, 10% on west on 42, et cetera, et cetera. And I'd be interested to know how were these percentages arrived at?
Those percentages were based on a number of factors, including existing travel patterns, the density of, in the case of the retail and commercial uses, the households in the area, anticipating where people are going to be coming to and from, and the way they're going to get to this development. And all of those percentages were reviewed and approved by both town staff and NC DOT as part of the traffic study process.
So, so part of, part of that determination was onsite visit or no?
Yes, and existing traffic counts.
Okay. I also noticed under projected traffic volumes, uh, 5.1 existing traffic that, in those, from NC 4270 eastbound and westbound, 42 Johnson Estate, 42 Springbrook, 42 Johnson-Hell Parkway, and 42 Amelia Church, that apparently the figures that were used were from March and September of 2016, is that correct?
For the, those, uh, volumes were used for the existing conditions only. We couldn't perform new counts because it was in the middle of the pandemic and traffic patterns were not consistent with how they have been. So we used that older data, grew it by 3% a year up to the year 2020, and that was used for the existing condition. For all the future conditions, the background and build-out conditions, year 2027, we used the NC DOT traffic forecasts for the NC 42 widening project. So really, these, those counts from 2016 were not used for the future conditions, just for the existing baseline condition.
When were does the 3% factor come in? How did you arrive at 3%?
Uh, that was based on historic growth on the existing roadways in the area, NC 42 Amelia Church, I think, NC 42 north and south of the interstate, of the interchange, and then north and south on Amelia Church Road.
And I know that Harbor Mill is a, a short distance away, but that is a very busy, busy intersection, especially during peak school hours. I'm curious to know why that wasn't taken into account?
We, the NC DOT and town staff did not ask us to study that intersection. We studied all the intersections they requested us to study.
So it wasn't done because you weren't asked to do it? Is that what I'm interpreting there?
Correct, we were not asked to study that intersection.
Okay. This particular question is a result of reading the NC DOT response to your report. The TIA, the TIA indicated that one or more intersections in the analysis network had a level of service LOSF for some approaches without identifying mitigation. The TIA indicated that the level of service at one or more intersections in the analysis network degraded by at least one level without identifying mitigation. The TIA did not provide traffic analysis results for all movements for an approach policy on street driveway access to the North Carolina highways, 2003, page 20. This tale, detail was only provided in the synchro output pages in the appendix. TIP Project R 3410 is in the immediate area of this project. As this rezoning was not included in the forecast, then TIP design year analysis should be provided. Justification should be provided for its exclusion. Unjust, unadjusted daily trips should also be provided in the trip generation tables in the, in the, uh, in the body of the report. The driveway manual requires daily trips be shown without adjustments, such as model splits, pass-by trips, and internal capture rates. That seems to imply to me that they feel your traffic impact analysis did not answer all the questions that they were interested in. Is that fair to say?
That, well, let me, let me say this. The memo you're quoting from comes from the NC DOT Congestion Management Unit. They provide their review to the NC DOT District Office, and then we coordinate with the District Office. So we did not have a lot of initial coordination with congestion management. They, they had, did, as you noted, have some issues with our methodology. We have since coordinated with them and the District Office. They recommend, recommended additional mitigations, additional turn lanes that are now a requirement of the development and are included in the committed elements. So it is our opinion and the Department's of Transportation's opinion, I can't, I was speaking for them, but based on our coordination, their opinion, that the traffic mitigation measures now adequately mitigate the projected traffic for this development.
And does our staff have documentation to that effect?
I'd, I'd have to double-check our files, but I believe we, we do have documentation that NC DOT, from the congestion management, that they have essentially approved the TIA and are okay with everything. And we have been coordinating closely with NC DOT and applicant on the, um, required improvements to the road network as the project begins to get built out once, if it's approved.
So is, my interpretation of that is that based on the changes that this gentleman, that Travis just mentioned, uh, as, as additional requirements by North Carolina DOT, you've got the documentation to substantiate that that's what they have to do?
Yes. Yes.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, this has been noted as a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. If there's anyone who wishes to speak on this, please step forward and state your name for the record. All right, no one wishing to speak. I'll close the public hearing, and I'll turn it over to the council for their deliberation. Um, as you can see on your agenda, there are three separate actions, four, I'm sorry, second page, uh, four separate, separate potential actions. The first one being the approval of the 2020-104 SD.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, for one, uh, for the fourth, uh, action, the approval of the option to purchase agreement. Um, the agreement that was attached to your agenda was not the latest agreement that has been provided. The two changes with the final agreement that are, that have been reviewed both by engineering and the town attorneys, um, basically with regard to the water treatment, excuse me, the water tank, uh, the purchase price was put as an up to 6.5 million. The previous agreement had it as a static 6.5. That's something that, uh, that staff and the developer had been discussing, so that change has been incorporated into the final agreement, as well as the finalization of, I believe it's Exhibit C, uh, which lays out the, the engineering specification that they're supposed to meet as part of that agreement. So, uh, both town staff and the town attorney, um, have reviewed and are, are okay with the final agreement as stated.
Thank you.
I may ask one question of our, our town manager. With respect to the location of the water tank, you and the engineering staff are satisfied that the, the most recent location is satisfactory to the town?
That is correct. The final event, it does reflect a, a discussion that we've been having over the last few weeks. Essentially, it's still in the same parcel of land, general vicinity that we'd been talking about previously. It's just been moved uphill to the, to the higher elevation. So, uh, we are satisfied, I believe the developer, uh, and we're all in agreement at this point that we can move forward with this as proposed.
Okay.
Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve with conditions preliminary subdivision plat application number 2020-104-SD Lumen, um, based upon the four findings of fact as deliberated by this council.
I have a motion and a second for approval of the 2020-104 SD, um, included with, including the, um...
Conditions of fact.
Conditions, thank you. Uh, as provided, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution 2021-59, the wastewater allocation for the Lumen project.
We have a motion and a second for approval of Resolution Number 2021-59, wastewater allocation. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
All right, Mayor, um, I make a motion to approve the reimbursement agreement.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval of the reimbursement agreement. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just one quick question again to the town manager. I am assuming that you are satisfied with the most recent reimbursement agreement?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Mayor?
Mr. Ray?
I make a motion to approve the option, uh, to purchase agreement.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the approval of the option to purchase agreement. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, up next on the agenda is the Economic Development Incentive Agreement for Lumen. This item has also been continued from the November 1st, 2021 meeting.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Patrick Pierce, Economic Development Director for the town. So as part of this project, the developer and, has, uh, requested an economic development incentive, so I wanted to walk through that incentive that's been, uh, negotiated for your consideration and provide a little context there. So overview of this presentation, we'll look at kind of the reasonable significance of this project, um, a little bit about the project itself, uh, the economic impact, um, the use of tax incentives, both in the state and nationally, some of the specific incentives and some of the taxpayer safeguards associated with this. So first, just to kind of familiarize everyone, as you all know, this is a very important gateway where this project lies. This is the 540 expansion map. The part in yellowish-orange there is the, um, is the southern extension, which is going to be complete here in the next few years. As you see, as that extends out, that'll be in very close proximity here, and the intersection of US Business 70 and 42 West will really become a very important gateway into the town of Clayton and into Johnston County. And that is right at the heart of where this project lies. As you know, from reading the news, Johnston County is the fastest-growing county in North Carolina. It's also the fastest, Clayton's the fastest-growing town in Johnston County, and a lot, and the top immigration locations are Wake Harnett and Durham County. So you see a lot of, a lot of opportunity there, um, in terms of, in, in employment center, and that's why I think this is a very strong project here. The project itself is up to 700,000 square feet of Class A office space, as was, was discussed, uh, previously. Um, in addition to that, there's 100,000 square feet of retail and commercial, um, that has also been proposed. In addition to that, is also up to 120 hotel rooms, 600 residential units. And I think an important piece in considering economic development incentive is that this project will annex into the town. So currently, it is not within the town limits, it's within the ETJ, and currently pays no town taxes. So here are, this, these are not, um, these are not renderings of necessarily this project, but of other things in the developer's portfolio that, um, when, when requested, these are some, you know, representative drop, drawings of the type of product that they have brought to market, and things that, you know, could be, could be similar to the sort of things that you may see as, um, as this moves along into further development. So here's another slide, give you some ideas of kind of the size and scale of buildings that have been proposed. Now, another important piece on an economic development incentive is thinking about the overall economic development, um, impact here. Um, the, Johnston County is part of their process, had a, um, an economic impact study prepared by Dr. Michael Walden of, uh, he's a professor alumnus at, uh, North Carolina State University. So looking at that, the construction phase of this, so these are the temporary impacts, the one-time impacts would be 2,541 private sector jobs generating over $113 million in labor income, and in terms of local government impact from that would be 2.5 million between city, or, or between town and county in terms of local economic develop, or into local, local government impact of that, in terms of positive economic impact. In terms of operating annual income of the project as complete, they project almost 3,500 private sector jobs, um, in total, 28 of those being direct, and about $7 million in local government impact, uh, positive economic impact as a result of this project. So the use in tax incentives in general are something that are used commonly throughout the United States, and it's really to target specific types of growth at local, state, and federal levels, and these sorts of things, uh, these sorts of tools are used across all of those, and typically targeted, but not exclusively, at industrial or commercial-type settings. These mechanisms vary by state, so as you read stories of different things of the use of tax incentives, it really depends on what the state law allows the states, uh, and what the state's tax code is, and how that is structured in terms of how these incentives are used. In North Carolina, the tax incentive law, uh, for local governments is governed by the, uh, General Statute, Section 158-71.1. This is not an exhaustive list here, but some of the, I think the key parts is their use, allows for the use of local governments to increase taxable property, to glow, to grow employment, and to improve local business prospects. So the incentive details here, um, would be to grant 50% of, add, a grant of 50% of the ad valorem taxes paid for seven years, beginning in 2024. This only applies to the Class A office space portion of the product, which is really the most competitive piece, um, from a, I guess, from where capital can flow. Um, and this is a, is in, in, uh, in slides coming here, you can really see, I think, where that comes in, and where, where Clayton and Johnston County have been competing for a class office space here. Uh, this is a minimum investment in terms of this, in terms of a minimum investment of $200 million, a minimum square footage in order of 525,000, so that's three-quarters, or 75% of the maximum allowed. And there's also minimum job and wage requirements tied to this incentive. So in terms of safeguards here, obviously, this is to incent the kind of growth and what, what, uh, what the town is looking for here, and we want to see that happen and make sure that if there is a grant that is, that is extended, that, uh, you know, that taxpayers' dollars are, are protected here. So in that, I would say first is, is this is a grant based and applies to taxes that are already paid. So this is not a check that comes forward, it's a, it's, um, a grant based on taxes that are already paid. And there are two other important pieces. There is a schedule laid out here in terms of the build-out, so the town has the right to exercise that if the grant build-out schedule is not met, the, it can be canceled, this incentive agreement, as well as if by the end of the project in 2024... 2030, at the end of that seven years, can seek reimbursement if all those thresholds have not been met and the minimum investment targets have not been met as well. So there's really, again, safeguards there to make sure that what is what is being incented is actually happening and actually occurring in order to receive this. Johnston County Commissioners approved a similar tax incentive at their October 18th meeting recently. And as I was alluding to before, in that testimony, my colleague, Chris Johnson, the Economic Development Director for Johnston County, made the point, he's got, obviously, a lot of experience, a lot more than I do, in office attraction here, given his time and tenure at the county. But office space, as he said and was quoted in the article, is a missing piece of the county's jobs puzzle. And as as you can read there, that there's obviously, we've had a lot of expansion and a lot of great work in industrial and the biotech, but really have missed out on particular opportunities as it comes to office space. So this is really, I guess, in conclusion, regionally significant, given the location of this project and a catalytic project and an important gateway. It diversifies by giving us Class A office space and really a product that we haven't seen quite like this at the scale within the town, adds significant tax value to the base, provides substantial economic impacts, strong taxpayer protections, and has strong support from our our partners at the county who passed a similar measure a few weeks ago. So with that, I would take questions now. I also wanted to give an opportunity. I know that the landowner, Dean Penny, would like to make some some remarks as part of this as well and would like to invite him up. But I'm happy to either take questions now or if you'd like to hear from him first and then we can take questions together, whatever whatever you would desire.
Let's go ahead and take any questions for staff at this time. Mr. Grandis.
Two questions. What's the minimum employment number that we're talking about as far as the number of folks?
So in the agreement, it was set at 100 and that mirrors what what the county is. But the economic impacts, obviously, to fill up a project like this will be, you know, would exceed that 100 number if if it went to full fruition.
What's the average wage?
Leave the average wage in the agreement was set at a minimum of 55,000.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for staff? All right, if not, this has been noted as a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak, please step up and state your name for the record.
My name's Dean Penny. I'm here tonight really wearing three hats. Number one, I am part of the Penny family. And so I'm proud and honored that my family has entrusted me to look forward and take care of the next generation for this property that's been in our family since the late 1930s. Number two, I'm standing here as a lifelong resident of the Clayton community. I was born and raised here and grew up here as the town has grown up. And number three, I'm also proud to be a partner with Craig Davis. So really excited to be able to bring something of this magnitude to our community. So as you can see, I'm fully invested, both emotionally and financially, and going to live with the results, just like everybody else here. So as Patrick has pointed out, this property is very strategically located. It is a gateway to our community. And as such, it's it's a tremendous opportunity, but it's also a tremendous responsibility to make sure that this property is developed in a very positive way for our community. We are looking to bring something that allows that that makes Clayton more than just a bedroom community to Raleigh. We want a place where people can live, work, play, eat, shop. They don't have to go into Wake County. They can stay here in Johnston County. That's what we're trying to create, something of a lot of very high class. So with that scale in mind, I want to talk about, you know, those around me know that we have referred to this property as the Penny Farm for years and years and years. Our application was applied through the name Lumen. That Lumen name was a placeholder. And so as we start thinking about moving forward, we are I'm here tonight, I think it's time to change that and tell you what the true name of the development will be. And I want you to keep in mind, our our idea is to honor the Penny name in an appropriate way. But this land, we all know, is not going to remain a farm. It's becoming something much more. And so we want to look to the future and the visionary and we wanted a timeless name. So where we are headed with this is we're going to name this the Copper District. I hope most people will recognize the Copper Coin Penny in that reference to the Penny name. But we believe that the Copper District is going to allow us to look to that future and bring the quality that we're looking to bring within this development. And so we're excited about that. We're excited about not only this development, we're excited about the Clayton community and the growth here. And we we believe in this. And so we are very thankful for the partnership so far and we look forward to that partnership with you moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wish to speak? Okay, no one else wishing to speak?
If nobody else wishes to speak, I did want to make sure for the record
Yes.
that we will be entering into the record comments that we had received from a resident back on October 26th, and they were from Jay McLeod. And I believe all council members have received them.
Yes.
And those comments will be included as part of the official record.
All right, thank you.
All right.
If no one else wishes to speak, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to the council for their discussion. Mr. Thompson?
Mayor, one point, just to just to highlight, there was an adjustment in this latest version of the agreement to coincide with the timing of the county's grant award. Other than that, it's identical to the to the one you've seen for several weeks.
Mr. Thompson?
I want to say that in general, I'm not a fan of deals. I'm not a fan of incentivizing everything. You know, I feel like a lot of times people need to try to do the best, make it on their own. But with this one, it's different. And this is something that is a win-win for us and the community because we're requiring a minimum investment here. You know, this incentive applies to money that we've already received. You know, we're looking at a $200 million investment. And this is incentivizing Class A office space only. And that's something that, you know, when I hear from citizens and people, they're like, you know, no deals, don't, you know, you hear this kind of talk like that. And when you explain to them, this isn't a blanket deal. This is for a very much needed entity in our community and that Class A office space is very much needed. And, you know, I feel good about this. And like I said, in general, I'm not a fan of deals. I just, you know, that's just not me. But I think this is one that is going to be a win-win for all of us and is very necessary.
Mm-hmm. It's a definite win for Clayton. Anyone else? Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the economic development incentive agreement.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval of the economic development incentive agreement. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. So I thought y'all were going to call it a pretty penny, but I like the idea of Copper District.
Yeah.
All right, up next on the agenda is the purchasing policy revision.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Town Council, Madam Clerk, Deputy, excuse me, interim Town Manager, Coppola, Attorney, Town Attorney, Mr. Colley, and our Deputy Town Managers. My name is Sean Mizell and I am your Purchasing Contracts and MWBE Manager. And I'm here tonight before you for our public hearing. And I just wanted to clarify one thing, that the public hearing was more or less was for our MWBE policy. So what we determined was that we need to get in compliance with the general statute 143-128.2, that we needed to have a public hearing to establish our goal. So that's what we're here for before you tonight, what I'm here for before you. And so I wanted to tell you a little bit, and I will keep this short in respect to everyone's time, but I wanted to tell you a little bit about what an MWBE is and what an MWBE program is. And as I said, you know, it is required that we have a public hearing to establish our goal. The town has established a goal of 10%. Goals are established, either you can use the state require the state's goal of 10%. You can do a disparity study or you can have council to up the goal if they want to, to choose another goal, they can approve that. All local governments are also required to develop and implement an outreach program or have an MWBE program. And that is required by the state and federal government. Also, something that I enjoy, wanted to share with you is a lot of our MWBE programs with our neighboring municipalities, they've expanded their reach based on their local policy. So what that means is what they've done is they're not only using what the state requirements are of the three, you know, the threshold of $300,000 that you do the informal formal hub and where at state funds, when state funds are used, you have to start at 100,000. They begin their outreach programs at the $30,000 level with MWBE. So we're hoping here, or I'm hoping here at Town of Clayton, that we can make a more robust MWBE program and get that outreach out to our vendors. And I've also, at the last NCA GP Regional I was at, talked to Johnston County's procurement buyer and they were real interested in partnering with us to go with to the chambers, to the Clayton Chamber, to the Johnston County Chamber, to actually be able to do, you know, an outreach to these vendors. So I felt that was a good thing for the town. A lot of us know defining an MWBE is 51% of your business is either black, Hispanic, Asian, American, American Indian, female, disabled, socially and economically disadvantaged. Why MWBE? It's a very smart economic choice. It develops firms, it generates jobs, it strengthens the economy movement and increases revenue for the town. Also, it's a good business practice. The more firms that compete, the more competition or buyers and the town and citizens win. The chance for MWBE vendors to acquire contracts and procurement opportunities at an equal frequency with the larger companies, that's also very important. From a procurement manager's standpoint, I find it very important that we include our MWBE vendors, that we allow all of our vendors to participate in our procurement process. And that's what I look to do here, is to be able to get all vendors to be able to participate in our bidding processes. Also, as an organization, it's good that we value diversity, equity, and inclusion in our procurement process. So what's next, you ask? Following the public hearing, we look to adopt the town MWBE policy and include the policy in the 2021 revised procurement policy. We look to develop an outreach program to allow MWBE vendors a place at the table when we're bidding, when we're doing our bids, have them a place to say, let them have a say in what we are actually doing. Subcontractors be at our pre-bid conferences, make them aware of our bids that are out there for them, and encourage diversity, inclusion, and all aspects of procurement here at the town. So are there any questions at this time?
Questions or comments?
Yeah, I just have a comment. Absolutely amazing. I think this right here will literally, I feel, bring everyone together, especially from all kinds of cultures and different backgrounds, different stories. It just it it just shows that Clayton is willing to reach out and, you know, we just want everybody to succeed and I appreciate you on that. And I think we we I think it's verifiable 10% that we do?
Yes. And it's reviewed every five years, according to the policy.
Perfect. I mean, if 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 that's something that we've been doing for quite some time, I definitely wouldn't mind, of course, talking with council and everyone else, see if we can get that increased.
Yes. And also, a way to do that, when I was in Cary, we were in the process of doing a disparity study, where you hire a consultant to come in and they actually do a disparity study of all your spend and look at all your your bids and, you know, analyze that. And then they make help you make a determination on raising that goal, whether you should raise that goal. So a lot of municipalities are doing that. And then there are other municipalities, as I've said, that when they go back and review, they may make a decision on their own, council may approve to raise that goal up. But I'm someone who's a big advocate and that's why, you know, I really liked talking about this tonight here at this public hearing because I'm a big advocate of the MWBE vendors. I'm a member of the North Carolina MWBE Coordinators Network, so I have a lot of outreach with them. I actually serve as their on their professional development team for them. And we have a conference this week. So it's just really important to me. And I will say, since I've been here at Clayton, three MWBE vendors have come to the desk and, you know, they have been brought to my attention. So I've been able to refer them to the departments, you know, so that they would be able to be part of the bidding processes in the future. So it is very exciting and it's exciting times. And we're really excited about making this a robust MWBE program. I'm all about outreach and all about transparency and all about, you know, getting as many vendors as I can into our program.
I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Awesome. Anyone else? Thank you, Sean. This has been noted as a public hearing and if there's anyone wishing to speak on this, please step forward and state your name for the record. All right, no one wishing to speak? I'll turn it over to the council for their action.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Grandis.
I make a motion that we adopt resolution 2021.
Durham has one and I know them, you know, their MWBE managers really well. So I'm looking forward to getting out there with them and putting Clayton out there and having other vendors do business, you know, with the town here. So thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Before we move any further on the agenda, I'm going to call for a quick 10-minute break and then we will resume in 10 minutes. and then we will resume in 10 minutes.
Good evening. Staff would like to request that this annexation be continued or tabled until December 6.
All right, we have consensus at the council. Thank you, sir. We'll do a continuation until December 6 on this particular item. Up next on the agenda then is the 2021-128 ANX Sam's Express Car Wash Annexation.
Good evening. Staff would also request that this annexation, public hearing be deferred to December 6 as well.
Consensus. All right, we will continue that to the December 6, 2021 meeting. Up next on the agenda is the 2021-126 OA Text Amendment 155-500.
Good evening, Council. So this text amendment in front of you tonight is proposing to amend Section 155.500, the Resource Conservation Areas. The primary purpose of the proposed text amendment would be to revise definitions of steep slopes required to be protected under resource conservation areas. As, and as you'll see in the different options, we've provided you several options for this. And in all the options, the one thing you'll notice in all of them is that we have recommended to reorganize the section slightly. So one option is no changes to the current language and just reorganization of the section, and then there are four additional options with changes. And again, this is based on a couple of different things. One is feedback from the development community, and the fact that we've had at least, so far today, at least a couple of variances dealing with this issue, as well as staff generally believes that our ordinance may be a little too onerous at this point, but we're not sure exactly how we should change ordinance, so we wanted to bring you, bring forth options for the council, and let the council decide what may be best for the community. Just a reminder of what resource conservation areas are. They include the 100-year floodplain, stream buffer areas, slips above 25% of at least 5,000 square feet contiguous area, and jurisdictional wetlands under federal law that meet the definition applied by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. You'll see on the screen there, overview of some intent of the resource conservation areas, including protecting natural resources, encouraging site design techniques that preserve the natural environment, controlling erosion, slippage, and sediment runoff into streams and waterways. And then the ordinance, as written, does also include prohibited uses of these areas, including stormwater control measures, roads, parking lots, impervious surfaces, and golf courses, agricultural, and forestry activities. You'll see here on the screen, we, I provided language from our 2040 growth plan and our newly adopted 2045 growth plan that speak to steep slopes specifically. You'll see in the 2045 growth plan, actually, both growth plans have similar language, but I'll go to the 2045 growth plan, since that is the one that is now adopted. There is language in there talking about dividing resource conservation areas into primary and secondary, with, I believe, the recommendation that steep slopes fall in that secondary area. I also wanted to provide you a brief overview of how other jurisdictions handle steep slopes. That, again, is also up on the screen. As you'll see, a lot of, a number of jurisdictions includes some sort of prohibition or regulations around steep slopes. Several of them are less stringent than, than Clayton's, and a couple of them are more stringent. And finally, before we get to the options, here's a GIS map that our GIS folks prepared, showing the steep slope and RCA area, steep slopes.
Again, we're really setting the stage for this and really making sure that we are pushing forward with the strategic goals on plans necessary to meet this growth. And that is again around pending development. There's about 6,900 new homes that have been approved, so they've been entitled, which in the average here is 2.5 persons per household is over 17,000 people, potential population here that are entitled that have not yet been built. During this process, the public engagement was really important. We did lots of stakeholder interviews with different groups around the community. This included folks from economic development, from community members, from the business community, from education. So had fall 2020, we did a first community survey that really set the context for establishing this plan, had over 2,300 responses there. And then we've done two public meetings, one most recently on October 7th, and have also had online comments open during most of the month of October when we released, after we released the plan, after the joint meeting of the planning board and the town council. So again, this is what that growth plan looks like here in its draft form. And the vision around that is really a thriving, diverse community, protecting the small-town ambience, home, great home for families with quality housing, with easy access to shopping, dining, parks, and schools, and a vibrant downtown and growing businesses throughout the town. And really to achieve that framework here are these seven areas in land use and housing, arts and culture, transportation, mobility, services and infrastructure, downtown, economic growth, and parks and natural resources. So that's the overview of the plan that we've discussed at several meetings since that joint meeting on September 22nd. Again, the planning board adopted or recommended adoption of this at their October 25th meeting after having a chance to review it also at their September meeting. And again, we talked about some of the changes and updates as a result of that input there. And now we are at the last step in this process here in this plan that we've been working towards throughout this process here, which is the public hearing and potential consideration of adoption. So with that, I'd say we've got our consultant, Jake Petrowski from Stewart, who has been, him and his team have been working us throughout here, and Ben Howell, our planning director, available for any comments or for any questions you have that I might not be able to answer.
Those are comments from council. All right, thank you, Patrick. This has been noted as a public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record. All right, no one wishing to speak. I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the council for their action. Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the growth plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of growth comprehensive plan. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. First, I just want to say to staff, the folks at Stewart and all the members of the, all the citizens and members of the steering committee for all the great work they've done on this. This has been a long process and to see this happen, this is really the guiding document that we need is from a staff level to be able to move us forward on the correct path that you guys have set out. One thing I would like to get tonight, if possible, would be authority or the okay to move forward with a couple of the items that were put in there as priorities, most particularly putting out a request for proposals or qualifications for the rewrite of the UDC, the small area plan related to downtown, and the small area plan related to the 4270 interchange there near where Lumen, the Lumen project was just approved. Obviously, there's processes that take several months to go through to be able to then get to the point where even talking about getting a scope and feed developed. So if we can, I believe staff has been working since those were a priority from the document. I just wanted to get the head nods, some head nods I'm seeing, but get the okay to get those out on the streets so we can start recruiting, or excuse me, requesting for submittals.
Thank you.
Mr. Grandis.
I propose that we move forward with interim manager Capola's recommendation.
All right. Thank you, Gensler.
For clarification, Mr. Grandis, is that a motion?
No, but I can make it such if you'd like.
It's not up to me, question from a fellow councilman.
Let's make it a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Up next is the 2021-108 ANX SAMZ Express Car Wash Annexation.
Good evening. Staff would like to request that this annexation be continued or tabled until December 6th.
All right. We have consensus at the council.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, sir. We'll do a continuation until December 6th on this particular item. Up next on the agenda then is the 2021-125 ANX Lumen Annexation.
Staff would also request that this annexation, public hearing be deferred to December 6th as well.
Consensus. All right. We will continue that to the December 6, 2021 meeting. Up next on the agenda is the 2021-126 OA Text Amendment 155-500.
Good evening, council. So this text amendment in front of you tonight is proposing to amend Section 155.500, the resource conservation areas. The primary purpose of the proposed text amendment would be to revise definitions of steep slopes required to be protected under resource conservation areas. And as you'll see in the different options, we've provided you several options for this. And in all the options, the one thing you'll notice in all of them is that we have recommended to reorganize the section slightly. So one option is no changes to the current language and just reorganization of the section. And then there are four additional options with changes. And again, this is based on a couple of different things. One is feedback from the development community and the fact that we've had at least, so far to date, at least a couple of variances dealing with this issue, as well as staff generally believes that our ordinance may be a little too onerous at this point, but we're not sure exactly how we should change ordinance. So we wanted to bring forth options for the council and let the council decide what may be best for the community. Just a reminder of what resource conservation areas are. They include the 100-year floodplain, stream buffer areas, slips above 25% of at least 5,000 square feet contiguous area, and jurisdictional wetlands under federal law that meet the definition applied by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. You'll see on the screen there an overview of some intent of the resource conservation areas, including protecting natural resources, encouraging site design techniques that preserve the natural environment, controlling erosion, slippage, and sediment runoff into streams and waterways. And then the ordinance, as written, does also include prohibited uses of these areas, including stormwater control measures, roads, parking lots, impervious surfaces, and golf courses, agricultural, and forestry activities. You'll see here on the screen, we, I provided language from our 2040 growth plan and our newly adopted 2045 growth plan that speak to steep slopes specifically. You'll see in the 2045 growth plan, actually both growth plans have similar language, but I'll go to the 2045 growth plan since that is the one that is now adopted. There is language in there talking about dividing resource conservation areas into primary and secondary with, I believe, the recommendation that steep slopes fall in that secondary area. Also wanted to provide you a brief overview of how other jurisdictions handle steep slopes. That again is also up on the screen. As you'll see, a lot of, a number of jurisdictions includes some sort of prohibition or regulations around steep slopes. Several of them are less stringent than Clayton's and a couple of them are more stringent. And finally, before we get to the options, here's a GIS map that our GIS folks prepared showing the steep slope and RCA area, steep slopes primarily around town. You can see they're primarily centered around the Neuse River with a few around Little Creek. So down to the options, as I mentioned, we provided five options for the resource conservation areas specifically around steep slopes. Option one, no real changes, just reorganizing the section, clarifying the definition of steep slopes. Option two, requiring that steep slopes must be directly connected to one of the other resource conservation areas and be at least 5,000 square feet of contiguous area in size in order to be protected. Option three would require steep slopes to be, have to be within 100 feet of one of the other RCA areas to be protected. Option four, they would have to be directly connected by a width of at least 20 feet. And option five would remove the protection of steep slopes completely. I do have some maps here to show you sort of what the different options would do. Option one here, everything in the hatched area in an orange would be protected, everything in oranges would be steep slopes. The hatched areas would be the other resource conservation areas. Option two here, you'll see the steep slope areas in red that would not be required to be protected, but everything in orange would still be required to be protected because it would be directly connected and meet the 5,000 square feet size. Option three, you'll see that green hatching is 100-foot buffer on existing RCA areas. So you'll see all of the steep slope areas that would still be required to be protected and the ones in red that would no longer need to be protected because they're not connected or they're not within the 100-foot area. And option four, again, you'll see the red areas that would no longer need to be protected based on that option. And then option five, any steep slopes outside of other resource conservation areas would not need to be protected at all. So just to finish up, the planning board of their October 25th meeting did recommend that council approve text amendment option two, requiring steep slopes to be protected if directly connected to the 100-year floodplain wetlands or stream buffers and at least 5,000 square feet of contiguous area in size. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions or comments for staff? Mr. Grandis.
The situation that we have today, in my opinion, seems to be adequate. So, and I understand your explanation for wanting to make change, but I'm not real clear on the need. And another question that I have is, I know that state statutes have various and sundry requirements, to my knowledge anyways, and I believe that we have been abiding by those in addition to our current regulations. Is that fair to say?
Yes, sir.
So could you explain again why we want to make this change?
It really comes down to, we've had quite a bit of discussion since I've been on board at staff about the, our requirements to protect the steep slope areas. I think, you know, overall, from a staff level, we do agree that our current regulations are probably a little too onerous.
Too what again?
Too onerous.
Okay.
However, we do, you know, we do think, I think there's some agreement, there's agreement on staff that, you know, it's not, it's probably not a bad idea to have some protection of steep slopes. But we really wanted to bring it forward to council, bring you some options to say, here's some different options of how we can still protect the steep slopes and get community feedback through the public hearing and from council as to which, what may be best for the community. As our regulations are currently written, we will, we end up with areas that have no connection to any other important environmental areas that are required to be protected when there's not, there's questionable benefit to protecting those steep slopes, steep slope areas. We've had cases where it appears that some of these steep slopes that we may be requiring protection of may be from leftover spoil piles from, you know, previous earth moving years ago, or it just, they're just natural landforms, but they have no connection to stream buffers or other environmental features. And so that's where we do, we do think there needs to be some change, but we're, I think, from a staff perspective, we, we're not sure what the best change is for that, and that's why we wanted to bring this forward.
So could you explain to me, I understand two variances have gone to the board of adjustment?
One has gone through the board of adjustment. One is currently getting ready to go to the board of adjustment.
Could you share with us the reasoning behind the variance request and whether or not the variance was granted?
The first variance request actually went through the board of adjustment before I was hired, so I'm not very familiar with it. I believe it was O'Neill Overlook was the subdivision. And again, it had to do with the, they had a number of steep slopes that, were they required to be protected, would have significantly reduced, I think, their ability to develop the property. And again, I think they did provide evidence at the board of adjustment meeting showing where some of those steep slopes may not have needed to be protected to still provide the environmental protection for the other environmental features. For the, on the other variance that is going to the board this week, I'll refer to our attorney, Mr. Colley. I'm not sure how much I can speak to that since it has not yet gone to the board of
I would tend to agree. It's probably better to leave that out of the equation since it's a quasi judicial process in itself.
Yeah, I get that. So the fifth option that we have in here, could you, could you kind of, I want to get into that in a little bit more detail so I can really understand either the advantage or the disadvantage of option five?
For option five, it would just be completely removing the reference to steep slopes from the definition of resource conservation areas. So stream buffers would still be required to be protected, wetlands would still be required to be protected, the 100-year floodplain would still be required to be protected, but there would be no protection required for any areas of 25% or greater slopes. As you can see on the map for option five, what that means is you do have some areas of steep slopes that are connected to other resource conservation areas that would no longer need to be, that would no longer be required to be protected. And some of those areas that are connected, there may be some, I think there may be some reason to protect those due to, you know, potential for erosion leading into a stream buffer, you know, things like that. But they, you know, under option five, they would not be protected at all. So you would, you would just have the, you know, the stream buffers, wetlands, and the floodplain protected.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. This has been noted as a public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on this item, please step forward and state your name for the record.
Good evening. We've been here for a while, so I'm gonna try to keep this as brief as possible. Appreciate y'all taking this under advisement. Would like to note that we have two experts with us tonight available to council if y'all have any questions. Not sure if we're talking about the environment and steep slopes that, not much, and I appreciate Ben's presentation, but what this would actually do for the environment or whether this protects or does not protect the environment, you know, I think is still a question. So with us tonight, we have Bob Zarzecchi with SNEC. He's an environmental consultant, probably one of the most respected environmental consultants for these type matters around. He's been doing this for 27 years as well as working with the town on their, or, you know, in the private sector on their environmental code and processes since the late 1990s, including indebted back to Riverwood Athletic Club. Also with us tonight, we have Tim Somerville with 17 years of experience as a civil engineer with Stewart, who also has a lot of experience as it pertains to civil engineering around these steep slopes. I'm not gonna bring them up. I have some prepared comments, they're available for questions, but I do not want to prolong more than we have to. On this type piece of code, I think everyone's got a point of view, staff's got a point of view, you know, your consultants may. I'm bringing tonight a kind of a point of view from the private sector. I know at the end of the day, this is your decision, this is your code. I'm here tonight more to just give you information and a history and knowledge with our consultants so that you can make a good and informed decision. First, just a little history on this section of code. This steep section, steep slope section of code was adopted into the 2005-2006 UDC rewrite in November of 2005. I've been doing plans and business with the town of Clayton for a long time and have done the research and know that since then, this code was not enforced by the town of Clayton from its inception until January 1st of 2021. That's 15 years that this piece of code was not enforced and not regulated. Since 2005, we've gone through three town managers, three planning directors, and three engineers, none of which have enforced this section of code. Reason knowing, I've seen developments go with steep slopes, I've developed neighborhoods with steep slopes, and this is, this has never been an issue in the town up until this year of January 1 of 2021. There are multiple projects that have been approved, vested projects with steep slopes, not factoring in the enforcement of this code. I think the biggest part of this is that for the last 15 years, option five has been business as usual for the town of Clayton, and that is what the business community has been working with and going under until the abrupt change. Now, you know, in staff's defense, you say, well, what happened? What was the abrupt change? Why did we go from not enforcing it to enforcing it on January 1? And of course, the town took over regulating the environmental portion of its projects where before it delegated it out to the county. Well, the reason the county didn't enforce it is the county does not have a steep slopes guideline that they regulate. Furthermore, the federal institution, the Army Corps of Engineers, does not have a guideline such as this, neither does the state, North Carolina Department of Environmental and Natural Resources. Neither the county, state, nor feds regulate what we're here discussing tonight to this extent. And for the town to have a code that is more stringent than our county, state, and federal, I just think is something, is information that y'all need to have. From the private sector side, we go through to get these projects done, an extensive process. We spend a lot of money and a lot of time hiring consultants to go through and make sure that anything we do protects the environment. That includes buffer calls, that includes getting the Army Corps of Engineers to walk out, walk each site. Sometimes that includes mitigation. If we're impacting, you know, certain areas or doing too much impact to the environment, we have to pay money into a fund to correct that. So we go through an extrinsic process to do that. And as Ben said, we can't hurt the environment. The feds and the state will make sure that we can't get out there and hurt the environment. These steep slopes that we're talking about, and I would like to say that map, I think, is probably the most extreme version of what we're talking about to be illustrated, or could be steep slopes in the middle of a project that had been cut out from just a collection of water running for no environmental reason whatsoever. And I think it's a reach and is overregulated. And as I said, we go through a lot of process to even before we bring projects to the municipality for approval. As you well know, we have to come with those calls, with the Army Corps of Engineers and those approvals ready to get approved. And just think that the overregulation at the town level for the code to be worse than that would just kind of hurt the process. And with that, I would just add, you know, the town of Clayton being kind of a hometown feel and just, you know, we just, we keep moving further and further away from that, you know, and more regulation, more regulatory guidelines. You know, I see Morseville, Cary, all that, I get it. But on this one, to think we're going, for something we've not done for the last 15 years, then we're gonna regulate more than the federal government would regulate us is just, as a citizen and a business person, just a little tough. But it's your decision. We would like to recommend that since option five has been the status quo in the town for the last 15 years, since it is more stringent than county, state, and federal regulation, that we would align with that and go with option five to be consistent with the other areas. But any questions, our guys will be happy to answer them.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, I just do have just a couple of comments. Just in reference to, we weren't following in the past or the rules, I just want to kind of make us, you know, just going forward, you know, whatever, you know, town staff or any comprehensive plans that we have going forward, I just want the development community to know that those are the rules going forward. Everybody needs to play on an equal playing field. I just, I just don't understand just how, you know, just how we're being talked to by, you know, when it comes to certain things like this. And just kind of diving, let me just kind of back up just a little bit. I'm just gonna say this, that the town of Clayton is in charge. And so when it comes to steep slopes or anything else like that, or this Lumen project in general, I just need people to know, like, you know, if we are here to, if we vote on anything, you know, we don't turn around and go to staff or complain, but the rules are the rules. And stick to them. And so I think that we would not have all these issues if people would have just followed the rules in the first place. And so now we're here and it's like, you know, it's causing a lot of issues and a lot of, you know, feedback from development community is just because that people weren't following the rules. And so now that we see that it wasn't a problem, we need to go ahead and fix it. And going forward, everybody just needs to do the same thing going.
And I appreciate that, and that's why I said it's y'all's vote. And I can appreciate needing to fall in line with regulation. I guess from our standpoint, especially when we go to vested projects, projects that have come before this board before and have been approved, I think mutually trying to understand both sides of vested projects as well as when rules are enforced is important because when we get approvals and are vested, it does give us a sense that the town is approving projects and we're going forward. I would agree with you on new projects. If this, if we had new projects coming in today after January 1 and staff had, you know, said, these are the rules, we'll either bring the project or don't bring the project. I'm right there with you. But some of these projects have been approved 10, 15 years by this board, not necessarily all, but by council. And I think, I think you bring up a lot of good points, and it's something the development community as well as the town can mutually work on to understand each point of view.
Mr. Thompson?
I have a few comments. First of all, I think the purpose of local ordinance is to do what's right for our community. You know, in everything we do, there's state laws, there's general statute out there, and everything from what the state says is a minimum speed limit or maximum speed limit to, you know, anything. We have a noise ordinance in town. The state doesn't have one. We regulate the speed on our streets because the state's regulation of 35 mile per hour may not be what we need on those streets. And I think that's where local ordinance has the ability to do what's right for us. Now, I do think in preventing or protecting the environment is important. I also completely, I agree with you that I don't think it's fair to have something that's been approved 10 or 15 years ago and now us come up and say... that's been approved 10 or 15 years ago and now us come up and say, you've got to do this now, and that may change the entire layout of that community. So I understand that, and I don't think that's right. And, you know, in my view, I like option three because it seems to be about the least intrusive and has an ability to protect the environment, but it doesn't put all these pockets out there that some of the other options would do. And, you know, in my opinion, I like option three the best of all. I don't think we should do nothing. But I think, to me, option three seems to be a good compromise middle ground that we're not going to affect too much of what's already in place and still do something. So that's where I'm at on it.
Mr. Grass?
I think one of the things that, and I don't know that we could do this tonight, but I would be interested in knowing what sort of issues we've had with the existing The reason I say that is, is the old adage, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And I'm a little concerned, especially when we have federal and state requirements. And if our development community is adhering to that, then I don't really have a problem. I am concerned about floodplain and buffer areas. Now, and I do know that I think four of these five refer to that to varying degrees. I have to agree with where Jason is, is if we don't choose five, to me, three is the number. But, and I don't know if this is permissible, Mr. Mayor, but I'm going to ask, we have two qualified engineers in the audience, and I'm wondering if it's appropriate to hear from them.
Well, I mean, I don't think it's inappropriate to hear from them, and this is a public hearing, and certainly, once Mr. Smith has finished with his presentation, it's open to anyone else who wishes to speak for the record. So if they choose to come, that's fine. That's, that's, that's how we play the game. A couple of things from my perspective. As a visual artist, I don't really know anything that was passed that got developed on a steep slope. So I would love to see some documentation from what has happened. I would like to see where things were built and how the slopes were done, and like, I need some visuals on this because to common, everyday people who don't deal with this every day, I need to have a better understanding of what this is. As it pertains to state and federal laws, you know, I'm a true proponent of, and thank you for saying that you know this is our call, because I appreciate that. Because with state, and let's talk specifically state government, they have, over the last 10 years, worked, this General Assembly, over the last 10 years, has worked so diligently to remove the power of the municipalities and creating mandates. One very easy example is annexation. You know, they did away with any municipality being able to annex without it being voluntary. There have been other things that the General Assembly has taken their rights and the controls away from local government for the state. So anything that a municipality has full control of, they should, they should hold that close because those items are less and less as we continue to move forward. So I would hope that, you know, obviously, I hope we can get to a good solution that works for everyone, but I just need to, I need just some visuals on this because I don't, I don't know what a 25%, and I don't think people watching on the video and online tonight understand that aspect of it either. I don't know what it means for it to be 25% or, so I need some visuals. I need, I need to be able to see what we're talking about. I need examples of this is how it can work. I need examples of this is what's worked based on what we've done, and I need examples of this does not work and here is why. That would be helpful, you know, for me.
Mr. Mayor, if I will, just for the one comment about what's been maybe approved previously that may have been impacted if the ordinance had been implemented as written currently, I'd have to go back to our GIS staff to see if they can get some sort of historical topographic information to be able to run that type of analysis. So it would be pending available data to be able to do that. I do, you know, I do believe that we could probably provide something. I just, I don't want to overcommit if that is something that this council would like to see without knowing exactly what information we have available.
Fair enough. Just a conclusion. Mr. Grantis, Councilman Grantis, you had said, you know, if it's not broke, don't fix it. And what would come, I just would like to point out, I mean, in a code that hasn't been enforced that will, that is what is prompting the variances and the analysis. So I think this before you tonight, because since it is being enforced now, there are new, you know, things coming out of that enforcement, and I think that's one thing. And then Councilman Thompson, I agree with you. I think option five is the right call because that, again, is what we've been doing and is consistent with state and federal guidelines. However, if you were to choose an option, I do think option three is the best and most specific and less, it is the easiest to interpret for the business community to comply with.
Cool.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think I'd like to add to that just a little bit, too. In reading all five of these, including the existing one, to me, number three seems to be the most objective, whereas when you look at the others, they seem to be much more subjective. And I'm not a real fan of that.
Anyone else?
Is there any way we could, like, just table it until we get more information just on the slope part? Or what do you?
I would say let's finish the public hearing and close the public hearing and then have that discussion.
Oh, okay.
Anyone else wish to speak?
I think that's it.
No one else wishing to speak? I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to council for their discussion.
Oh, yeah, I think we should probably just table this and just until we get a little bit more information. What do you guys feel about that?
I would, I do agree with the mayor. I'd like to see a visual, and I do not want to see us make a hasty decision. If we're going to make a decision, I would favor option three or option five. I'm not in favor of any of the others.
Mr. Alder?
I'm disturbed. For 15 years, we've had an ordinance, and I've said this before, if there's ordinance on the books, we should be enforcing. My personal thought is we should go with option five until we have the information available that we can change it. And that's the motion I made.
We have a motion to go with option five. We have a motion and a second to go with option five. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on, I just wanted to make a brief comment that, especially for those watching, that I think it's fair to create awareness that one council does not bind another. So after the December 6 meeting, anytime beyond that, should the next council of the town of Clayton decide to revisit this or to make changes, that would be their option. Okay, with that being said, we're going to move on to old business. Next up is the Little Creek Transmission Award.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Louis Duffy with the town of Clayton, I'm on the project team for the capital improvement projects, which includes the Little Creek Transmission Project, which is a force main and a gravity that is taking wastewater from the current Little Creek site down to our new facility down on the noose. We had a bid opening on the 3rd of November, had four bidders. There was a low apparent bidder, J.F. Wilkerson Contracting. And what I'm bringing before you is to award, a tentative award, so that we can submit their bid to the state for their review, which they will submit to us a formal authority to award, draw a construction contract, and execute.
Questions or comments?
One thing I just want to add, so this is for just the pipeline portion of that project, the conversion of the existing facility to a pump station. That is actually going out to bid, I believe we're supposed to receive bids sometime around the first of the year for that. But for this portion of the project, I just do want to note that the low apparent bidder, as Louis stated, was approximately $2 million lower than our current engineer's estimate. So in today's world, getting a bid in under that estimate has been a win for us with the project, but certainly just want to make sure that it's clear that this is just the pipeline portion of that project.
Mr. Bunn?
I make a motion, we adopt Resolution 2021-61.
Second? I have a motion and a second for adoption of the Resolution 2021-61. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is the WRF Funding Package Number Two.
So this is like the first one that I brought before the council. It's a little bit larger because it includes quite a large amount of packages. That includes site work, all the concrete for all the structures, the clarifier mechanization, also the remaining of the balance from the pre-stress tanks that we, we only approved the engineering for that because we weren't sure about funding. So, yeah, this is just another package. I will say there are some opportunities to value engineer some aspects of it, and we are looking into that. So, yes, I'm asking for Rich to have the authority to execute Funding Package Two. And then also, kind of bundled in with this is, I mentioned the extra funding, the SRF and the LGC, we're able to work out that loan, and we can actually start drawing from it now as the additional $80 million. So we are having to do a budget amendment to include the closing fee on that loan. It's an additional, I think, $1.1 million to the 641 fund. So that's kind of tied up in this. So those are the two things that I would ask for your approval.
All right. Thanks, sir. Questions for staff?
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Bunn?
I make a motion, we adopt Ordinance 2021-11-05.
Second?
I have a motion and a second for the adoption of the Ordinance 2021-11-05. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is the Code of Ordinance Update, Chapter 31-03, Town Manager.
I think my name's on this one, Mayor, so I'm going to kind of share a little research with you and walk you through some discussion. This issue comes up from time to time, and that is Ordinance 31, 31.03, Section A. And I had been asked by a couple of council members to look into this and provide a draft for purposes of clarifying this ordinance. My perspective on it is about clarity, not about the merits of the, of the underlying issue of where the manager sleeps at night. Okay, I'm going, I'm going to give you some thoughts on how to clarify this ordinance. The actual requirement of residency is always within the council's discretion. But if you look at the materials in the package, 3103 has a parenthetical under it. It was adopted initially in 1971, and then there was an ordinance passed, I think, that expanded on it in 1981. The language in question says, "At the time of his appointment, he need not be a resident of the town or state, but during his tenure of office, he shall reside within the town." The, the language in that last phrase, "but during his tenure of office," is the part that is unclear, uncertain. And one, not real sure what it means. Two, there's the issue of, can it be waived by the council? And then three, what's the law on the subject? So first, what, what does it mean when it says, "But during his tenure of office, he shall reside within the town"? There is a history, I understand, with a, with a prior manager of waiver for, or deferral of that requirement for 12 months. Certainly within the council's discretion to do that. But I'm wondering about some other examples. If the manager worked or lived in the town of Clayton for the last year, instead of not living here the first year, if he lived here the last year of a, of an assignment as town manager, would that satisfy the during his tenure? Or to get even kind of more extreme or ridiculous with the analogy, what if he was here the last month or the last day? It seems that would still, might not satisfy the spirit, but it would satisfy the language in the, in the ordinance. So I think that ought to be clarified. I'm not real sure what it means. On the issue of can it be waived, the answer is clearly yes. It can legally be waived. And then what's the, what's the law on this? I mentioned that this was adopted in 1981. The next page, I put this in the package as well, the next page in the materials, the two pages down, is an excerpt from the town charter. And the reason I think that's relevant in this analysis is because it was adopted in 1988. There's a rule of interpretation that says the latter controls the former. So if something's adopted later in time, that tends to control something in conflict that was adopted earlier in time. Because the presumption is that there was an intent to make a change. For what was said in, when the charter was adopted in 1988, is that the town shall operate under the council-manager form of government in accordance with GS 160A, Article 7, Part 2. Well, that is the statute that outlines the powers and duties of the city manager or the town manager. So I think it's, it's at least arguable that the revision of the town charter intended to amend the residency requirement in the ordinance that was adopted in 1981. And there is no residency requirement in the general statutes. That is purely a town discretion. So there's no statutory duty to reside in the town. So having, having looked at all that, what I suggested to you was a revision to that one section to just delete that last sentence. I think taking that sentence out clears up the issue as far as the code section is concerned, makes the code section consistent with the statute about the duties of the town, of the town manager. And it does not change in any way council's discretion on the subject. And it does not change in any way council's discretion on the subject. It just clears up the ordinance. If residency is a requirement, the town still has the latitude to do that. So that's the recommendation.
All right, questions or comments for the attorney? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt Ordinance 2021-11-06.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of the Ordinance 2021-11-06, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next, under new business, is budget amendments.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Robert Mackay, Finance Director. Tonight, we've got three budget amendments we're asking council to take action on to approve. The first one is to provide funding for startup costs to implement our internal IT functions. Council's been afraid of that recommendation, to take back, for us, the town, to take back over its IT function. And so we need to provide some startup costs to bring two positions, the effect of January 1, as well as provide the lion's share of this $830,000 fund balance appropriation, is to go out and procure IT equipment, servers, and other equipment that's necessary. Because right now, as you know, with having a hosted desktop solution, the town really basically doesn't own any of its major IT equipment, servers, and whatnot. So we got to get back into that game and go out and procure that equipment. The next two budget amendments are establishing new capital project funds. The first one is the Greenway System Capital Project Ordinance, and that's a $1.005 fund balance appropriation. That's to go out and replace those three critical bridges that need or in dire need of repair, we're going to replace those. The second capital project fund ordinance is the Loop Road Athletic Field Capital Project Ordinance, and that's to go out and to construct athletic fields and parking site at the Loop Road location. And that's a fund balance appropriation approximately $1 million.
And that's specifically soccer fields?
Hmm.
Okay, just for the record. All right, any questions or comments for staff?
Mr. Thompson. I just want to say, especially regarding the IT functions, I know for the public and those in the audience, it may seem that that's a lot of money for us to put into it. But we've had a very thorough analysis of our IT functions, and at the end of the day, we will say, you know, we've got to spend money to save money. And I think, you know, we've listened to Robert and our financial experts on, you know, where we're at with this. And though it looks like we're going to be spending a lot of money on IT stuff, at the end of the day, the recurring cost will go down of us farming this out and contracting with others to do our IT function. And, you know, once we get going with it, the savings will far outweigh what we're spending upfront.
I agree. Anyone else?
I'm glad we're at this point, especially with the IT.
Yes.
It's been a long time coming.
Yes.
And I have to agree with Mayor Pro Tim Thompson in what he says about the recurring costs are going to be dramatically reduced.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinances 2021-11-07, 08, and 09.
I have a motion and a second for adoption of the ordinances 2021-11-07, -11-08, -11-09, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is the acceptance of real property donation. We are really getting our money's worth out of you tonight.
Yes, sir.
I like it.
Patrick Pierce, Economic Development Director. My last scheduled presentation of the evening. So we were approached by folks about two months ago about a piece of real property here. Just give you a description on this. It is right here on Business 70, just west of the NC 42 East interchange. It's about .7 acres of property. It's mostly wooded, it's on the west-hand side, there's a drainage easement, an NCDOT drainage easement. If you go beyond that, it's the Old Town Office Center. There, the other side is a residential property. In the property just to the west, we have a pump station there that's existing now, and there's also two water lines there. They are looking to, they've done, I think, a lot of work throughout Johnston County and are actually going to be closing out the LLC at the end of the year and wanted to be able to give that piece of property to the town. They had hoped for potentially a park or some of the benefit, I don't know that that will necessarily work, but we certainly thought that after looking at it, that there were some advantages to taking this piece of property from them. Again, this would be a property donation, so there's no cost to the town. It's encumbered, again, by numerous easements. As I mentioned, there's the drainage easement on the western border there, there's some overline power easements, and I think there, because of, I think, there may be one other easement on the property, but it's fairly encumbered from future development on just that site as a whole. We did some desktop and visual inspections with the engineering department, and there was no obvious concerns in terms of us taking control of that property. From an advantage standpoint, it's, you know, why would we take this? So in talking, I think that here's some of the bullets that we had in terms of, I think, advantages of taking it. While, again, there's no direct and clear current use of it, that frontage along 70, that is a high-profile intersection there, about a tenth of a mile away, so as we continue to grow and think about ranch road extension, you know, this property could be useful to have. NCDOT and their long-range plans has looked at turning, you know, potentially doing some expansions along Business 70 as well, so having that frontage helps in the property acquisition process. Again, there's existing development on one side of it, there's the pump station that's adjacent to, and there are also two water lines, one that kind of comes in and another one here, then talking to engineering, they could eventually connect those one day, that creates a better loop and a better system for the water supply, so there could be some advantages having that as well. So that's a high-level overview of the piece of property and what we've looked at there, and what we are, I guess, our recommendation after doing that analysis is to accept that property, but would happy to be answering any questions you have as it relates to that piece of property or anything around it. Thank you.
Questions or comments? Thank you, Patrick. I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve Resolution 2021-62.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the adoption of Resolution Number 2021-62, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any further discussion, Mr. Holder?
Is that the right number?
Number 2021-62, that is the correct number.
She says 61.
The clerk just began to make a comment.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is a memorandum of understanding with the Clayton Community Recreation Foundation.
Mr. Mayor and council, this is a housekeeping item, I mentioned it at the last meeting. Effectively, what we've done here is put together, through the town attorney's office, put together a memorandum of understanding between us and the CCRF, really just to memorialize what has been a longstanding relationship. Effectively, what this will do is give us clarity in terms of, as the town sees opportunities or as CCRF has opportunities brought to them to potentially partner or sponsor different elements of our parks or otherwise, this gives them clarity in terms of us and how we'll interact with them. My understanding is that the foundation did approve this at their board meeting last week, so with your approval, it'll pretty much be the guiding document for us to move forward with our relationship, as well as some other items I'll probably mention under staff reports around here.
If that'll take any questions. Questions or comments for staff?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to authorize the execution of the memorandum of execution by our town manager.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the execution of the memorandum of execution, is there any further discussion?
It's a memorandum of understanding.
Thank you. I stand corrected, record reflects. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Moving on to staff reports, starting with the town manager.
Well, really, the main item I wanted, following up on that action, I would like to ask for some direction. We spoke last time about a potential opportunity that CCRF has with regard to sponsorship of the bandshell out of Municipal Park. With your all's action last week to go ahead and formally approve the total scope of Municipal Park to include both the small shelters and the large shelter, as well as the splash pad, I'd like permission to go ahead and give CCRF the opportunity to look for sponsors for those four elements. Again, there's two small shelters, large shelter, and the splash pad, in addition to the bandshell that's already been discussed.
And who is going to determine the value that needs to be placed on those?
That's something that we've talked to CCRF about, they, I believe, historically have been the ones to determine kind of where that market leads, but we will certainly look towards our Parks and Rec folks to work with them directly to understand what that value would be.
Gotcha.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Grantz.
I don't know that this would be the case, but if we take a vote, I believe I need to recuse myself because I am the newly elected chairperson of CCRF. This was the manager's report, right? Were you asking for action on something?
I just want consensus that I can move forward with that. I don't know that action's necessarily required based on MOU, but want to put it out there if there's any issues.
Proceed.
I don't think a formal excusal would be necessary, Mr. Grantz. Thank you.
So you have consensus, move forward.
Yep.
All right, we'll go ahead and work with our partners at CCRF. Other than that, I just want to say, trying to get this hopefully done by nine o'clock here, so I don't want to take too much time, but obviously, this council will be back on the 6th for, I guess, the changing of the guard, if you will. But I just did want to acknowledge tonight, with this outgoing council, you guys, one, appreciate everything that you've done over the last several years, at least, this is the first council from when I got here four years ago that I've kind of worked with the entire time, so it's been a joy working with you all. I think with the actions taken tonight, we've got some really good closure and really springboards to a lot to come here for the town of Clayton. Big approval tonight with the Lumen Project, it's been a long time coming, great economic development opportunity, the comprehensive plan, clearly that is going to be the guiding force for us moving forward, so we're really excited about that. So, again, just want to say, I appreciate all the hard work that you all have put in over the last several years or decades in some cases, and it's been a pleasure to work with you all. Thank you.
Absolutely. All right, town attorney?
No report.
Thanks, sir. Town clerk?
Thank you.
Any other staff? All right, I'll now open the floor for informal discussion or public comment. All right, no one wishing to speak, I'll turn it over to council for comments. Mr. Bun.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask if Scott would come up for the recreation department? Are we good to talk about this? Are we good? Loop Road project. Scott, I was going to ask you, did you finally come up with some hard numbers for us on the Loop Road project?
I did, sir. What I'm most comfortable asking for is what Finance Director provided, Seignan, which is really the seed money to get things going. However, we did do calculations that indicated, just schematics. It's a schematic inside, a full buildout of an eight-field complex, like a brush to pave parking. You know, a reasonable number, this is a big number, gentlemen, a reasonable number is going to be a million dollars per field, and that's going to be lit, irrigated, paved parking, all the necessary improvements to have a performance-type complex. Now, that's not what we're replacing at Powhatan Road, roughly a million dollars per field in today's dollars.
Is this lit for nighttime?
At a million dollars per field, yes, sir.
And you said early summer.
Back up. We would, with grading, grubbing, and seeding, we can be.
May 1st.
May 1st.
Yes, sir.
And you've got it programmed, ready to go.
Well, to feed that program, we're going to get our tails wet, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I got one more thing. This is my last official, look, I drank a half a gallon up here, whatever, no free-range, they have to be kept in the back of a yard, and if it's in the ETJ like a farm, it's a farm. Like their dogs are running free in the ETJ in a farm. I don't see this no different than any other animal, really. So if we can put together something in that nature, and if anybody wants to chime in, please do.
Don responded up to this point, so I'm with Councilman Bun, I think the faster we can do this, the better. On December 11, then, I absolutely agree with Ben, it's got to happen in a public hearing, under the police.
In a draft and an ordinance, we should not put in that we.
It's not limited to a particular zoning district.
It's, if it's in the general police powers, I think we would stay.
Yeah, that's why I was asking, just to clarify, if you wanted it in a specific district, then we're back to land use.
Yep, but putting it in the police powers, it would be allowed anywhere in town under these requirements. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn. Second.
All in favor, say aye.